Please stand for the flag salute. Sunshine notice, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' public meeting agenda for Tuesday, January 7, 2025. The time is now 7:06. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public 1, 1975, notice that this meeting was published in the November 21st, 2024 issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Here.
Commissioner Petracca?
Here.
Mayor Kelly?
Present.
Well, President Mayor.
Thank you. Minutes, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have a Board of Commissioner meeting minutes for December 3, 2024.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca?
Hi.
Mayor Kelly?
Hi.
That's it for minutes.
Communications?
Thank you. We have an event application for Holy Family Church. It's the Visit of the Three Kings procession on Sunday, January 5, 2025. It was between the hours of 2:30 PM and 3:30 PM on Harrison Avenue, Harrison Street to Brookline Avenue. I need a motion?
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca?
Hi.
Mayor Kelly?
Hi. I see we have a couple of reports on this evening. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, I have a shade report for the month of December, 2024.
And Commissioner Evans?
Yes, I have a code enforcement report for the month of November, 2024.
Thank you. Bills, Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Bill list for January 7, 2025. Public Affairs, $120,970.38. Revenue and Finance, $2,919,011.73. Public Safety, $112,959.36. Public Works, $64,276.64. Parks and Public Property, $913,288.70. Water Utility, $382,485.15. Payroll as of Tuesday, January 7. Regular payroll total, $990,144.9. Overtime payroll, $79,759.27. Total payroll, $16,993.36. For a grand total of $5,582,895.32.
Move the bills. Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca?
Hi.
Mayor Kelly?
Hi.
That's it for bills, Mayor.
We have public comment on agenda items only. Anyone wishing to be heard on agenda items only, please approach the microphone and state your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm happy to be here tonight and, you know, just commend the municipality and the Board of Education for working together and coming up with a solution that is going to have a lasting effect on Nutley for many years to come. You know, as a former mayor and now in Assemblyman, I understand how municipal government and Board of Educations have sometimes find it difficult to work together, but this is an example that is going to be, you know, rectified statewide. So I just want to commend each and every one of you. This is an absolutely wonderful thing to be doing. And as the, you know, just for the residents, your Commissioner Board, especially Commissioner Evans, has been harping on me and I plan on fighting for more money down in this coming budget season. So we're committed to, myself and Assemblywoman Morales are committed to making sure that we help assist this to the finish line any way possible. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Assemblywoman Carmen Morales. Live in Belleville, right next door to Nutley, but as your representative down in the State House, myself and Assemblyman Michael Venezia are here this evening to congratulate you on this. I don't have the bill number. He has it on his agenda, but I just want to say that as a former preschool teacher, a former kindergarten teacher, a lifelong educator, knowing that this town of Nutley, thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, and I see the representatives here from the Board of Education, our superintendent, as well as the board members that are all here today, knowing that you're putting children first. Because when we invest in our young people, our babies, our children, we know that we are doing good work. Good work for our community, good work for the town, and good work for our future. Because the foundation, and I know firsthand what that is, education is the great equalizer. And when we invest in our children and in education, we know that we are getting a great return on investment. So for all of you, congratulations this evening for putting the work in, for ensuring that we continue to invest in our children, in our future, and in our communities. And like the Assemblyman Venezia said, we will continue to fight for any monies to bring it back home to District 34, which includes Nutley. Thank you so much for allowing us to speak.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure to hear from you guys. Always a pleasure to have you here. You're welcome to come to more meetings and sing our praises. But like you said, this was a team effort. And did we want to say some comments now or do we want to wait until we actually roll into?
We have a public hearing coming up, so we could probably do it before the public hearing before we, because we have to vote as well.
Okay, yeah. So I do want to thank you for coming and appreciate it. And like I said, you're always welcome here.
What's just one thing, Mayor? Assemblywoman Morales and Assemblyman Venezia, sure Commissioner Evans has, but that funding formula has to be looked at. We are not getting our fair share here in Nutley. So anything you could do to look at that and bring the bacon home to us, we appreciate.
What he's saying is we're going to be relentless.
And not just us, but all the Board of Education members here as well. Anyone else wishing to be heard on agenda items only tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance introductions, which we have none, and we'll move on to ordinances on, oh, I skipped Board of Commissioner announcements. Do Commissioner Evans?
Nothing for me this evening.
Just one, Mayor. Some of you may have noticed that there's some silt fence up around the Mudhole Memorial Park One. That's because the whole raking project is underway. They've begun some preliminary work and that should go on for anywhere from three to six weeks, weather permitting. So there's nothing wrong. We're just raking it hopefully to alleviate some flooding and to improve fishing in the mud hole. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Scarpelli?
Press release went out today detailing a pilot program that we're going to have this Saturday on recycling some of the old trash containers. We just want to get a little preliminary game plan on what it's going to take to get these up. So we're going to do that this Saturday and then we'll go from there. We're envisioning a nine-week program dividing the town into nine sections and going and picking them up. And we'll be recycling those containers. So it's a pretty monumental task. When you look at what it took to deliver the new trash containers, it took over three weeks at 12 hours a day, seven days a week. So trying to pick those up, and now these are all different sizes. We think that's going to be a big undertaking. So we need to do a little preliminary investigation to see what it's going to take, what equipment is the best. So just be patient with us and hopefully by the end of January, we can begin to roll that out throughout the whole town.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Tonight, I think I'm going to make history for the first time. It's good to have our assembly people here to hear it too. When you think of public safety, you think of always thanking the police firemen, AMTs, and deservingly so, right? But today, as I was driving around in this 17 years we're up here, I've never thanked the crossing guards. And I have to tell you, it is bitter cold out there. They are friends to our children that the Board of Ed is here. Most of them hand out Christmas gifts and, well, birthday presents. And, you know, they're our seniors for the most part. And I have to tell you, a lot of like today, if anybody's listening out there, I did put my head down while I was driving by just because it is so cold. I didn't even know what to say, but I want to give the crossing guards a shout out because they really have a tough job enduring all kinds of weather. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And as Commissioner Scarpelli alluded to, we have our new garbage collection system in effect now. It's a new system. As with any new system and any change, there's going to be some growing pains. If you have any comments or suggestions on how we can better improve it, we are more than willing to listen and feel free to call the Health Department. And thank you, Commissioner Scarpelli, for assisting in the recycling of the old cans. It's certainly a team effort. We also recently announced we are continuing our second year of the Hometown Hero banners. Any veteran or family of a veteran who's interested in showcasing your loved one who sacrificed, you guys sacrificed with them, they'll be on display throughout the town. And that's open to any Nutley residents, any former Nutley residents who were Nutley residents when they served. If you're a member of any Nutley veteran organization, and most people don't know this, but going back prior to 1902, Nutley was part of Belleville. So if you are a Spanish-American War veteran or earlier and you're from Belleville, we will honor you as well. I think that's all the announcements I have for this evening. So without further ado, I'll turn it back over to Commissioner Evans for ordinances on the second reading and public hearings.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 3574. I like to do 3474 and 75 together because they relate to this same piece. Both of these ordinances, the first is for, is a bond ordinance adoption for $9.8 million. And the second ordinance addresses the authorization to actually acquire property in Nutley. Before we have comments, I'm going to share some thoughts about how this all came about. So Al, please bear with me for a moment.
Listen, I'm glad you're picking on the assembly people and not me for the chainsaw. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, so, and I want to, before I start, I want to give a special shout out. I see Joe Pataglia is sitting in the audience. Joe, thank you for being here. Everything that we are talking about tonight, you were instrumental in making sure that it happened. And working with you has been a pleasure. And I can't imagine anyone who has advocated more for the school system to get this deal done than you did in making sure we addressed all of these points. Your commitment and involvement was tireless. We, you know, Saturday, Sunday conversations, you know, during the day conversations, the amount of time you gave up from work to do that over the course of this last year was, is very noteworthy. So I wanted to say, you know, you're here, so you should, you know, you deserve some recognition for the work that you did. Tonight, we are taking steps into the future for the benefit of our children and our community. The adoption of the ordinance for 9.8 million, along with the ordinance to authorize the acquisition of property, and ultimately the resolution that will read authorizing the mayor to sign the purchase agreement, actually creates a catalyst opportunity for the town that we haven't had before. And I think if we didn't take advantage of it, we wouldn't have it again. The alternative to not taking a step forward would be something that's completely unacceptable, and that would actually result in stagnation. We would not be able to do the things that this purchase allows us to do and in cooperation with the school board. And thinking about the principles that we all put in place, that we've all worked on under One Nutley, to allow us to figure this out, especially given all of the statutory rules that prevent both the municipality and the school board from easily working together. But, you know, where there's a will, there's a way, and you got to kind of research and go find out what you can do. And with that, and Justin, you've been helpful in helping us with that as well. So by voting on this tonight and adopting this, we're going to do a few things. We're going to purchase a building at 777 Bloomfield Avenue, along with the adjacent parking lot. We're going to add 10 much-needed classrooms to the district, which will for now be used for the expansion of the pre-K program, which will provide for an additional 90 to 100 students to enroll in the program by September of '25. But it doesn't stop there. By doing this, it'll enable the reallocation of classroom space in the John Walker Middle School, which will ultimately enable the transfer of these students to the middle school by September of 2026. So in the next roughly 24 months, the school district will actually leap forward in some things that we've wanted to get done for a long time, one of which has been turning the middle school into a true middle school by having six, seven, eight as part of that program versus just seven and eight because of the academic benefits that accrue by making that change in that model. What we're doing also says we don't have to spend 70 to 80 million dollars to do it, right? This, we're going to do it for about $10 million, rounded numbers, and not 80, which the town itself has told us repeatedly that a referendum for that kind of money is unacceptable in this town because it's not affordable. So we listen to that and working together as a team, we work through how we can make this thing work in a fashion that works well. We also get the board offices relocated to a permanent space so that they don't have to worry about where they're going to be. We know exactly where they're going to be. They're going to be on the third floor of this building for the foreseeable future. Everybody, when you talk about this, it's all great. The question is, well, how do you pay for it? What's the impact on the taxpayers? Well, the important part about this is that, starting in '26, the school district will pay the municipality the equivalent of $220,000, which is about the amount of the interest cost on the debt, which will be part of our debt service on the municipality's books. So for the amount of the debt service and using what we call bond anticipation notes versus bonds, right, we'll be able to roll the debt and therefore not incur an increase in our budget on the municipal side, nor an increase on the school side, because the money that they were paying for the lease space on Franklin Avenue, we're accepting that as the money that they would pay us, which, when you think about it, a 20,000-square-foot building, that comes to about $11 a square foot. So when you think about the economics associated with that and the value, it's a tremendous, you know, deal. In addition to that, you know, in looking at out into the future, this note will stay on the municipal books probably until sometime around 2031 through 2032, once the school board finishes paying off significant debt on their books, and then it will be able to be transferred from our books to their books. The value of that is says that until that time, it's only going to cost the school 220,000, which isn't any more than what they're paying now. They will be able to eliminate that cost in their budget, operating budget, in 2031, because this will become a capital program. And with the payoff of the debt, their capital requirements will be a lot less than what they are right now. So overall, it actually results in borrowing, you know, the future, what might be. It actually reduces the overall cost, the operation of the school district, which we all know, school districts like municipalities will increase in cost. Well, this is actually creating an opportunity that says we're going to be meeting our need for pre-K, we're going to advance the middle school, and yet, we're going to actually look at in the future, will we create space to manage the school district better? And then it will come off of the municipality's books and go forward. If we pay principal down between now and 2031, we will do that by utilizing a pilot funds that were negotiated in 2018 on a building on the Hop from the Rose site, right, which included, when we did the pilot agreement, it was included local taxation for the schools. So we're going to use some of that money for that pay down, right, as we go through this. So the idea is, school doesn't pay anymore. The municipality doesn't pay anything. Any pay down of debt is actually coming from a commercial taxpayer. It will not come from a residential taxpayer. So we're keeping it out of the residential tax bill, which is another aspect of this that makes it work. But we're not finished, because once you move this sixth grade out, that actually opens up space at the elementary level, which then allows the school the flexibility to figure out their trailers, but also expand the rest of the pre-K program and meet the demand that's in front of us. Pre-K demand, we're taking advantage of it because, again, it's not local taxpayer dollars. It's all under state grants. So the quicker we can move on that and secure that grant funds, the safer we are, because the state, you never know when they're going to change a program. So we should take that money in as quickly as we can. So when you think about it, we're not spending 70, 80 million dollars, but we're getting all the benefits that we were looking for if we were to do a referendum, and we're doing that for roughly 10 million bucks. So, and we're not taxing the local residential taxpayer any more than what they are right now. So overall, I think it's very clear. I think when you come to the end and you think about what we're doing, and Carmen, you mentioned it earlier, we're able to invest in our children's future by providing more early development education. We're making the middle school, the three-year curricula program, a reality, which is an intention that's been part of the district for many, many years. And we're doing that without burdening our residential taxpayers. So it took a lot of work, a lot of negotiation, but it's the right thing to do. So with that, we can open it up.
Before we open it up, Commissioner, $10 million is, or $9.8 million is a big price tag. What's going into that $9.8 million besides just the acquisition costs?
Sure. So when you think about it, we're doing it as an installment purchase agreement. So we're not going to buy the building tomorrow. We will buy the building once it's fully renovated. However, we're advancing the costs to do the renovations. But if you look at the base acquisition, the parking lot on the corner that, with the white rocks on it, that's valued at about $600,000. And the building is valued in the 2.2 range from our appraisal. So we're doing, we're basically buying the asset, the initial asset, for about $2.8 million. That's the initial piece. The remaining amount, $7 million, is what it's going to take to gut the building and completely renovate it. It'll be internally a brand-new building with brand-new HVAC systems, and we'll have an improved parking lot. There'll be a stop-and-go drop-off for the children, the outside playground, all of those improvements that are necessary in order to qualify for state grant funds for the program. That's where that $7 million is going. So we will purchase it once it's done. We also looked at the fact that the seller has the ability to do these renovations and do it much quicker than if we were to do it through public contracting law, which we don't have to do. And the reality is, while we still need to comply with prevailing wage, they're actually moving faster and they can actually negotiate materials in a faster way than we can. We're actually saving money. It was estimated that we're saving on this whole thing. If we were to do it ourselves, we're picking up at least a year, and we're saving about a million and a half to do it this way. So when you think about the 9.8, that's what we're getting for that.
So to put it in simple terms, we're getting, we're paying for the building land and the finished product and also time.
Yeah.
But we're getting a discount.
I don't do simple well.
If I can just as one point of clarity, and I know there was a lot there, it's an installment contract, and the payments will be made upon benchmarks being completed. We're not actually financing the renovation. There will be work that's completed and then payments that are made.
Excellent. So I think we laid it all out. I think at this time, we will, Mr. Bruno, do we need to open the public comment for each one separately, or can we open them together? Separately? All right. So anyone wishing to be heard on public comment for, or a public hearing on ordinance number 3574, "This is a bond ordinance providing for acquisition of lands and the buildings and structures thereon in and by the township of Nutley in the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $9.8 million. Therefore, and authorizing issuances of $8 million in bonds or notes to the township for financing part of the cost thereof." Anyone wishing to be heard on that piece of the puzzle, please approach the microphone and state your name for the record. Seeing none?
Move to close.
Commissioner?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Thank you. I'm sorry, Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Stane.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca?
Hi.
Mayor Kelly?
Hi. And?
We need to move the ordinance.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Stane.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca?
Hi.
Mayor Kelly?
Hi. Now, the second piece, this ordinance number 3575, "In accordance to the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley in the County of Essex, authorizing the acquisition of property identified as blocks 2304, lots 18 and 17," I move to open the public hearing.
Move to close.
Commissioner Evans?
Second. I'll second.
Do you want to comment? Do you want to comment at all? We're getting there. Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Stane.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca?
Hi.
Mayor Kelly?
Hi. And did you want to move it or?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Stane.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca?
Hi.
Mayor Kelly?
Hi.
I'd like to express my heartfelt gratitude to the Board of Commissioners for their collaboration and unwavering support in addressing our district's space challenges. Over the past two years, through subcommittees and a shared service agreement under the theme of One Nutley, our boards have worked together to turn dialogue into action, resulting in much-needed renovations at Nutley High School and Radcliffe Elementary School, and tonight culminating with this transformative action that you, this board, has just taken. Tonight's actions advance a forward-thinking plan to purchase a building and lease it to the district, supporting state-funded pre-K expansion, relocating the board offices, and the transition of the sixth grade to the middle school, and adding additional elementary classroom space. This approach lays the foundation for a cohesive middle school model within two years, fostering academic, social, and emotional growth for our students while enhancing curriculum and advanced learning opportunities. This initiative has the full support and collaboration of the Board of Education, its administration, and our monitor, reflecting its immense value to our community and underscoring the power of working together toward a shared goal. It also demonstrates the incredible potential of two boards working in partnership to address challenges and create opportunities for the betterment of our school district and our community. On behalf of the Nutley Board of Education, I extend my sincere thanks to Commissioner Scarpelli for his vision in forming the initial ad hoc committee that got our two boards together during his tenure as mayor, to Commissioner Tucci and Commissioner Evans, who served on that ad hoc committee, for all their hard work and collaboration and the One Nutley initiative. I also want to thank Mayor Kelly for continuing that subcommittee's work with the addition of Commissioner Petracca, which culminated into this event tonight. And this has truly been a complete team effort. And a special thanks to Commissioner Evans and to former Board of Ed trustee Joe Bataglia for their extensive work and dedication in bringing this vision to life. Again, thank you for your support, collaboration, and commitment to Nutley's schools and the future of our children. Thank you.
Good evening. I prepared something. But I'd like to speak a little bit from the heart tonight. On behalf of the educational community, our students, our teachers, our administrators, I'd like to thank this Board of Commissioners. You changed our schools today. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Thank you, Joe Bataglia, for your work on this. Thank you to our Board of Education for supporting this. This will trigger great change for our district, much-needed change, change we can accomplish, change we can do for our students. You have an educational community that's excited to do this. There's been a buzz around our school district. Thank you for your work, and we look forward to the next two years of making this happen. Thank you.
I did have also words prepared, but I have to be honest with you, for sake of sounding redundant, I am coming up here now.
I, I'm coming up here now as not only a vice president of the Board of Education, but as a father and a community member to really just take a moment to pause and really capture this moment in this community. Our assembly people are here, our Board of Commissioners, our Board of Education. This is going to change the face of this school district for generations to come. And I think that this moment is something that we will all be proud of and talk about for the rest of our lives and hopefully get to pass on to our, our children and our grandchildren as a, as a moment of inspiration of what a community can do when they come together. This is something that does not happen. I'm an educator by trade and a Board of Ed member by election, and I will tell you that this is unique. And what we are doing here tonight, I hope, is a shining example to other communities of what can be done when you actually, don't just talk about care, but demonstrate care. Come together. Many, many hours of, of time away from our families, away from our, sometimes, I won't talk, say it too loud, away from our work to make this happen. Countless hours. But one thing that is all about is Nutley. And when we had said One Nutley years ago, we celebrated that One Nutley and initiatives like this show that we are One Nutley. So I just want to sincerely thank you on behalf of the, the community as a father, as a member of the Board of Education, as an educator and a resident. So thank you all, and this is a wonderful moment. I hope we all hang around for some pictures too. So, thank you.
Any other board members want to come up and approach the microphone? Any of the commissioners have comments they would like to?
Yeah, Mayor, this is gratifying when you, you see something that was envisioned a couple of years ago come to fruition and great things happen. And when you put great minds of the five people here and the nine people out there together, you can have great things happen. So this is great for our children, which is the most important thing. And it accomplishes what was, would have cost a lot more money in a shorter amount of time, which is, you know, like I said, when you get great minds together, that's what can happen. And special thanks to Commissioner Evans for getting through all the mechanics to make this happen and to all the Board of Education members. And congratulations to Mr. Ferraro and Dr. DeLeah on your election. And great things are yet to come for the Township of Nutley.
Thank you, Mayor, yes. I would just like to say it's unbelievable that I still have a kid in the school system at my age. Unfortunately, he won't benefit from this, but my children got great educations, my older kids, and my high schooler now is getting an education. We always say in Nutley, the most important thing, our jewels, is our children. And, you know, to make an investment and to build a relationship with the Board of Education and this heavy lift, and thank you to Commissioner Evans as well for doing a lot of the legwork on this is, I believe is going to pay dividends. I also would be remiss if I didn't thank my good friend, Joe Bataglia, out there. And it's a privilege to have you here tonight, Joe. And thank you for all your hard work and everybody's hard work. And Tom Evans knows that I always say you can't put a price on public safety, but you can't put a price on education. And you know what, I think this is a, a, a really, a, a big moment in Nutley and it's going to pay dwarf dividends. And not to mention, I always say is how the schools go is how your town goes too, your property values, all that stuff. So God bless my father. My dad's still alive, he's eighty-nine years old, and he sometimes questions me a lot. But I even tell him it's a good thing for him, even though he doesn't have kids in the school system, it's an investment that you'll be paid dividends if you ever do sell your house. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Evans, did you have anything more you wanted?
I think I said enough.
At the risk of being redundant, I, I think this is a monumental moment in the history of this township. I think education is the foundation for all of our children to get one shot at it. There are no do-overs in education. So it's our combined responsibility to do the best we can for our children, give them the best education at a price we can all afford. And I think this is the first step in many more to come in the right direction. Congratulations, everyone.
Thank you. And I, I would just like to add that we, as a Board of Commissioners, have had a lot of successes recently, and that's because we, we've worked together to accomplish those goals. But those successes are nothing compared to the success that we've had tonight. And it's, it's in part because the, you almost had the planetary alignments. You had, you have the Board of Commissioners working with the Board of Education, working with our legislative team in, in the State House. And that never happens to get everyone all on the same page with so many different opinions. And it's all ultimately for, for the good of our children. And as Assemblywoman Morales said, you know, the great equalizer is education. I always say our most valuable resource is our children. But not only are our children going to win, but, but as Commissioner Petracca said, we're going to win as well because this is going to increase our property values. It's going to increase the value of our town and it's going to continue to drive people to want to come here, be here, and this is, continue to be a destination for people in life. This is, this is Nutley and everyone's going to want to continue to be here, live here, and grow old here, whether you're, you're zero or ninety-nine, or we have a couple centarians here. This is, this is the place to be and this solidifies Nutley as the place to be. So I want to congratulate all of us. I want to congratulate the entire board. Special shout out to both Joe Bataglia and Commissioner Evans for, for working hard on this. And I want to thank our legislative team for always being there to support us. So I think now's the time for a photo op and so we, we can stop patting ourselves on the back. Who's the bullseye? So does that make me the triple twenty?
You can stay if you want.
There's a lot of traffic on the way back to Belleville and Bloomfield.
Yeah. Yeah, a clear room.
All right. I think we have one more ordinance on for this evening, Commissioner Evans?
Yes, Mayor. Number thirty-five seventy-six. This is administrative. The Diamond Springs property was sold to a new owner and this transfers the, the pilot agreement, the financial agreement, to the new owner, which is, we're moving it from Diamond Springs Real Estate Investment Urban Renewal, Inc. to Soho Park Realty Urban Renewal, Inc. That's it.
Move to open the public hearing?
Move to close.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye. I think that's all we have for ordinances on second reading this evening. Moving on to resolutions, Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. I have, I have three resolutions. The first one is, I'm reading on behalf of the Board of Education. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township have identified a need for additional office and indoor space for public purposes, whereas the Board of Commissioners identified certain property identified as block twenty-three oh four, lot eighteen and seventeen on the Township's official tax map located at seven, seven, seven through seven eighty-nine Bloomfield Avenue and four thirteen Kingsland Street, respectively, collectively the property as particularly suited for its needed public purposes. Whereas Township has negotiated an installment purchase agreement for the purchase of the property with seven, seven, seven Nutley LLC and four thirteen Nutley LLC as owners of the property, which provides, among other things, that the owners of the property shall renovate existing, the existing building on the property, as well as the parking lot and all the site plan improvements to suit the township's needs according to plans and specifications provided by the township. Whereas the owner of the property has agreed to the terms and conditions of the installment purchase agreement, including the required building and property renovations. Whereas the Board authorized the, the acquisition of the property by way of ordinance thirty-five seventy-five passed on this evening, January seventh, twenty twenty-five, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, New Jersey, that the mayor and township clerk be and are hereby authorized to execute and attest respectively in an installment purchase agreement with seven, seven Nutley LLC and four thirteen Nutley LLC and a form acceptable to the township attorney, so move.
Motion?
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Stane.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
I just want to clarify that Commissioner Evans read that on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, not the Board of Education.
Did I say the Board of Education?
Aye.
Yeah, well, them too. So thank you for the clarification, Mayor. I think I did that before, didn't I? I think on the ordinance I did it, I think. I think my next resolution, this is for municipal tax appeal services. Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire the services of an attorney as municipal tax counsel to provide legal services concerning municipal tax appeals. And the Township of Nutley has a non-fair and open contract pursuant to the provisions of NJSA nineteen colon forty-four A twenty dot five. And whereas the tax assessor has determined and certified in writing that the value of the aggregate services provided by the vendor for the year will exceed seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. Whereas Joseph McLoane of Esquire of the law firm of O'Toole Scrivo located fourteen Village Park Road, Cedar Grove, New Jersey, oh seven zero zero nine, has submitted a fee schedule for providing such services, total of which will not exceed forty-two thousand dollars. Whereas the anticipated term of the contract is January one, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. The forty-two thousand is the same amount as last year, there hasn't been a change. Whereas the law firm of O'Toole Scrivo has completed and submitted the business entity disclosure certification, which certifies that they have not made any reportable disqualifying contributions to a political or candidate committee in the township in the previous one year, and that the contract will prohibit them from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract. And whereas funds are available in account five oh one, two oh four, two hundred and will be certified by the chief financial officer, subject to the adoption of the twenty twenty-five budget, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the mayor be and is hereby authorized to enter into a contract with Joseph McLoane, Esquire of the law firm of O'Toole Scrivo as a professional service, be further resolved. A copy of this resolution, as well as the contract, shall be placed on file with the clerk of the Township of Nutley and a notice in accordance with the public contract laws of New Jersey and the form attached to here too, shall be published in the Nutley Sun, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
My last resolution is on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, which I'll, I'll read by title, is Resolution of the Township Commissioners that authorizing the engagement of O'Toole Scrivo as counsel for the Township of Nutley concerning legal matters with respect to the on-three redevelopment area. The funds are available for this purpose in account five oh one, zero two, two oh five, subject to the adoption of the twenty-five, twenty twenty-five municipal budget. And a certificate of available funds has been filed with the chief financial officer in the township in accordance with local budget law forty-eight, colon four dash fifty-seven. Whereas, excuse me, whereas O'Toole Scrivo has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification, which certifies that the firm has not made any disqualifying reportable contributions to a political or candidate committee in the township in the previous one year that would violate NJSA nineteen forty-four A twenty dot five or the Township's local unit pay-to-play ordinance adopted by referendum or any requirements, and that the contract will bar to O'Toole Scrivo from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township that in accordance with local public contracts laws, hereby authorize the mayor and municipal clerk to enter into a professional services contract with the firm of O'Toole Scrivo at an hourly rate of two hundred ninety-five dollars, not to exceed fifty thousand dollars in the aggregate, be it further resolved that the business disclosure entity certification and business entity disclosure of campaign contributions shall be placed on file with this resolution and a copy of this resolution shall be published as required by law within ten days of its passage, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Be resolved by Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley, County of Essex, New Jersey, that in accordance with the provision RS forty-eight, colon four, there's fifty-eight, following transfer appropriations into twenty twenty-four budget being, same are hereby authorized and approved for Department of Parks and Public Property from health insurance, thirty thousand dollars to utilities, electric specifically, other expenses in a like amount, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Scarpelli, I see you have nothing on for this evening, is that correct?
Correct, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Petracca.
You know what, Mayor, I'm going to pull this resolution tonight. I just want to get a little more clarification on that before I read it. Thank you.
Sure, no problem. Moving on to me, I have six on for this evening. The first one is Resolution number three, twenty-five. It's a raffle application from the Spring Garden PTO, raffle license number sixty-one twenty-four, on-premise merchandise raffle for Thursday, February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, whereas the application has been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk and the police department, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned license is hereby approved and the municipal clerk is authorized to issue said license, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci? Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petraco?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
And also on for this evening is Resolution 425. This is to recognize the month of January as National Blood Donor Month, whereas on December 31, 1969, President Richard Nixon proclaimed January 1970 as the first National Blood Donor Month, as requested by Senate Joint Resolution 154 to pay tribute to voluntary blood donors and encourage new donors to join. Whereas the demand for blood donation goes beyond unexpected emergencies such as car accidents and natural catastrophes that are regularly needed to treat patients facing disease like cancer, cardiovascular disease, surgeries, and organ and bone marrow transplants. Whereas every two seconds, someone in the United States needs blood or platelets, whereas the approximately 29,000 units of red blood cells and nearly 5,000 units of platelets and 6,500 units of plasma are needed daily in the United States. Whereas an estimated 3% of all Americans donate blood, with 20% of those donations coming from donors under the age of 25. Whereas platelet donations are very important part of the donation process. Platelets are assigned the important task of clotting blood to stop bleeding and are vital for cancer patients and as well as those with blood disorders and undergoing open heart surgery and organ transplants. And therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey recognizes January 2025 as National Blood Donation, Blood Donor Month, and to urge all citizens in Nutley to support efforts and activities that bring awareness and education to blood donation during the month of January and throughout the entire year. Be further resolved, the many residents are encouraged to make a life-saving donation during the annual blood drive in memory of Keith Jarrett on Monday, January 27, at the Nutley Department of Public Affairs and Health between the hours of 3:00 PM and 7:00 PM. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petraco?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
I read this next one, Resolution number 525, on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners, whereas the late Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was a leader of great courage and skill who became known as the drum major of the American Civil Rights Movement and enfranchised black citizens, whereas Dr. King's life was tragically cut short by an assassin's bullet in April of 1968 in Memphis, Tennessee, while he was there to champion the cause of underprivileged workers. Whereas due to the efforts of many dedicated people who believe Dr. King deserves national recognition, the third Monday in January is nationally recognized as a day to remember Dr. King, his legacy, and the causes for which he so gallantly fought and died. Whereas Dr. King's life will always shine as a light for those without hope and as an example to be emulated by all who care about their fellow human beings, regardless of race, religion, class, or nationality. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, recognizes and celebrates Monday, January 20, as Martin Luther King Jr. Day. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petraco?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
This next one I have on for this evening is Resolution number 625, whereas an application has been filed for a person-to-person and place-to-place transfer of plenary retail and board broad package, privileged consumption license numbers 0716-32-008-009, heretofore issued to Jim Dandies of Nutley LLC, trading as Jim Dandies for Premises, located 561 to 563 Franklin Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey, 07110. Whereas the submitted application form is complete in all respects, and transfer fees have been paid, and the license has been properly renewed for the current lease license term, whereas the applicant is qualified to be licensed according to all standards established by Title 33 of New Jersey Statute of Regulations promulgated thereunder, as well as pertinent local ordinance and conditions consistent with Title 33, whereas the applicant has disclosed and the issuing authority reviewed the source of all funds used to purchase the license and the license business, and all additional financing obtained in connection with the license business. And therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, does hereby approve effective January 7, 2025, the transfer of the aforementioned plenary retail consumption license to Shop Right Wines and Spirits of Nutley LLC from its former location at 561 563 Franklin Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey, 07110, to 437 Franklin Avenue, Suite B, Nutley, New Jersey, 07110, and does hereby direct the municipal clerk to endorse the license certificate to the new ownership and new location, as follows this license, is subject to all its terms and conditions, and is hereby transferred to Shop Right Wines and Spirits of Nutley LLC at the location 437 Franklin Avenue, Suite B, Nutley, New Jersey, 07110, effective January 7, 2025. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petraco?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
The next one I have on for this evening is Resolution number 0725, whereas an application has been filed for a place-to-place transfer of a plenary retail consumption license number 0716-33-019-008, New Jersey, heretofore issued to John Gru LLC, trading as Jimmy's Bar for Premises, located at 692 696 Passaic Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey. And whereas the submitted application form is complete in all respects, and the transfer fees have been paid, and the license has been properly renewed for the current license term, and therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, does hereby approve effective January 7, 2025, the place-to-place transfer of the aforementioned plenary retail consumption license from its former location at 692 696 Passaic Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey, the premises at 561 563 Franklin Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey, and does hereby direct the municipal clerk to endorse the license certificate as follows this license, subject to all its terms and conditions, is hereby transferred to the premises located at 561 563 Franklin Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey, 07110, effective January 7, 2025. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petraco?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
The last one I have on for this evening is Resolution number 1025. And this is a resolution for the order for professional services contract to Gachion and Pamako for outside litigation counsel to represent the Township of Nutley in the matter PB Nutcliffe versus the Nutley Zoning Board, ESX-L-2816-23, total not to exceed $15,000. The term is November 1, 2024, through November 30, 2025. I'm just going to read the broad brushstrokes and the highlights. They have submitted, Gachion and Pamako have submitted a 2024 fee schedule for providing such services, an hourly rate of $215 for legal services by attorneys, an hourly rate of $100 for services by paralegal or law clerk. The contract will not exceed $15,000 for a period of November 1, 2024, through November 30, 2025, and the funds are available from account number 4-01-012-205 and 5-01-012-205, which we certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being subject to the adoption of the 2025 municipal budget. Whereas the law firm Gachion and Pamako PC has completed and submitted the Business Entity Disclosure Certification, which certifies that they have not made any reportable disqualifying contributions to political candidate or committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year that would violate New Jersey Statute annotated Title 1944 Alpha-20.5, where the Township's local unit to pay, local unit pay-to-play ordinance for New Jersey Election Law Enforcement Commission disclosure requirements, and therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, award the contract for Special Development Council, as follows, that the mayor and township clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute and seal and deliver a 2024/25 contract for professional legal services with Gachion and Pamako PC pursuant to a non-fair, non-open process in accordance with New Jersey Statute annotated Title 1944 Alpha 20.5, for a term beginning November 1, 2024, through November 30, 2025, for the state hourly rates not to exceed $15,000. A copy of this resolution, as well as the contract and business disclosure entity certification and business entity disclosure of campaign contributions, shall be placed on file with the clerk. A copy of this resolution shall be published as required by law within 10 days of its passage. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petraco?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
That's all I have on for this evening. At this time, we will open the meeting to the public. Anyone wishing to be heard on any item or any issue facing the township and wishes to address the Board of Commissioners, please approach the microphone and state your name for the record. Seeing none, Mr. Bruno, do we have a need for executive this evening?
Firstly, we have need to go into both sessions, discuss litigation and contract.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion for an executive.
Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, permits the exclusion of the exclusion of the public for meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances exist, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, and now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners in the Township of Nutley, move into closed executive session to discuss contract negotiations and litigation. Be further resolved that at the time when such discussion may be disclosed to the public shall be when, and such disclosure may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley pending and/or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters, within the exceptions provided for by statute. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petraco? Mayor Kelly?
Aye, and we won't be entertaining any more business this evening. Our next meeting is Tuesday, January 21, 2025, at 7:00 PM, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petraco?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Time is 8:06.